Have to be.
Yes.
He's going to be on our agenda. There he is. Okay, we're almost ready to start. And we'll just assume people will be drifting in as they finish their dinner and make it over here. So, welcome everyone. I'm Nancy Bickel, the current president of the League of Women Voters of Berkeley, Albany, and Emeryville. This is our one Albany election forum because, as you know, the city council were appointed because there were only as many candidates as there were open seats. But here we have an actual race. We're talking to, we'll be talking to the four candidates for the three Albany Unified School District school board seats. And the league has prepared questions for the candidates. But members of the audience, we invite you to submit questions. Send them up to our question reviewers right in this corner. They will review them for legibility and whether they repeat questions already submitted and pass them on to me. And as soon as I get, I will weave them in with the league's questions or replace league questions with them as it seems appropriate to me. So let me just remind everybody of the rules. Every candidate will answer every question. Every candidate will have one minute to answer. We'll alternate who starts, so everyone will get a chance to be first and last and middle. We, of course, encourage you to state your own views rather than criticizing others. And I've explained to the candidates that if they feel the need to correct or object to a remark by another candidate, they can draw my attention to that and I will give them time to do that or rebut or whatever is required. So we will start our questions with one of the big activities of the school board and the schools this year, the Common Core curriculum. So Paul Black, I think I forgot to introduce everybody. Let's do that first. So we have Paul Black, Charles Blanchard, who says he goes by Charlie, Elliot Chin, and Ross Stapleton Gray. And now I will come back to Paul and ask the first question about the Common Core curriculum. How far along do you think the district is in implementing the Common Core standards? And how do you think it's going? Do you have suggestions for improving implementation of the Common Core? Paul?
Well, the Common Core standards are still under development, so we're working with the standards that have been completed. There aren't textbooks available for all of the standards yet. We've purchased the textbooks that are available. We have enough computers so that the students can all take the standardized exams, smarter, balanced assessments, as they're called, that go with the Common Core. And we've started training the teachers, professional development for the teachers so that they'll be able to teach the Common Core. I think we're doing well, as well as any district, and I think we'll, you know, we'll just keep at it.
Thank you. Charlie?
How's that? So just to agree with Paul, that's a good summary. And perhaps to add to that, that I think Common Core is, for Albany, a very natural fit. I think for years, teachers in Albany have emphasized critical thinking and critical analysis, and that's much of what Common Core is about. Common Core, we want to focus on coming to some understanding of what we expect our children to know, what we want them to be able to do. It emphasizes thinking, the process, not just getting the right answer. And I think in many ways, we're ahead because in many ways, that is the way teachers have taught in Albany.
Thank you. Elliot?
Hi. I guess there's not much more to add, except to say I think Albany's in a pretty advantaged position, having not adopted Common Corps earlier, some of the eastern states. So we get to benefit from a lot of the curriculum that was self-made at New York and Georgia. And that means we can pick from a wider array of materials. So I think the Common Core principles are good. No one would argue that. It's the implementation of that, the workbooks and the worksheets and all that. And that's a work in progress. I think people all recognize that. And the fact that we are on the later end of the spectrum in adoption and implementation means that we have more to choose from, basically. And I think it's, you know, as these guys said, a work in progress. And, you know, we have smart students, good teachers, so we'll definitely get there.
And Ross?
Again, I can add very little of that. I probably have certainly less experience direct than the folks who've served on the board before, but I absolutely agree with Charlie on the idea that it is probably a good fit for Albany. The folks I've met as teachers, as administrators, have been quick to pick up, quick to adopt, and quick to adapt to new things. And the most I've heard about Common Corps from one of the math teachers at the high school was just gung ho on it. I mean, this fits how he teaches. He's taught my daughter. I know the results. I think Albany can execute on that.
Thank you. So there seems to be quite a bit of interest in the audience about school facilities. So I guess that would include the San Gabriel campus and what's going on there. And I'll just tell you the variety of questions we had. Does the district have room for more facilities because enrollment is increasing? And if new facilities are needed, where will funding come from? And I guess that applies to working on the San Gabriel campus as well. So I believe Charlie, it's your turn to start.
Okay, so that's a lot to answer in a minute, but suffice it to say that there is a district facilities master plan, and the board has, up to this point, been considering the possibilities. What they actually include is demolition of what we sometimes call the backwards amphitheater at the high school, which would make room for an additional four portables, perhaps. The San Gabriel site is a possibility for expansion of the middle school. The middle school, at this point, is the most overcrowded and has about 100 students more than its capacity. And from there, we can consider some additional space near Ocean View. That's probably my time.
Elliot?
Not being actually familiar with what's been debated on the board before and what facilities may or may not be on the docket and not understanding the needs as well as these two guys, there's not much more I can add to that. But definitely, you know, I think it would be, it's always a challenge to find the funding to build new facilities. And so that's, you know, it's a recognition I have that it definitely would be a challenge and some of that I would look forward to working on.
Thank you, Elliot. Ross?
Yeah, again, having not been directly involved in the, where do we build and what do we build, it feels like, yeah, we can shoehorn some things in. I guess the good news is if we're lacking space, that's okay, we lack the money to build on it. It's going to be tough, you know? That's probably looming largest for the board. Where are money's going to come in for all the things we're doing, not just facilities? And then if it's there, you know, my daughter started at Marin when there was no portables on the yard, and the basketball court is gone, and it's a shame how that's going to balance going forward. It's a good question.
So Paul?
Well, it's a big question and take a long time to answer all of it. One thing, well, the big question is where will the funding come from? And we have a small amount of money relative to the amount of money it'll take to do the facilities work we need. We have two elementary schools. We're in an ocean view that have been identified as neos seismic retrofitting. The students are not in danger, but the facilities are in danger in case of an earthquake. Would probably have to be shut down. Albany is very limited in its bonding capacity right now, so we have actually no way to raise the money to do all of this facilities work. And the board just voted to put the San Gabriel campus on the back burner because we don't have the funds in hand to build on it. So going forward, we're going to be looking at any funds that may be available. We're hoping there will be a state bond.
Thank you. So maybe we should just continue, briefly take a tour to the bond measure, the, sorry, the tax measure that's on the ballot. Of course, I can't quite find my note here. I think it's LL. Am I correct? And which will renew the parcel tax that supports, gives some additional funding to the schools. Am I correct? So maybe we should just continue talking about what would happen if that failed? And how would that affect the campus, the schools? So I believe it's Elliot's turn.
I think the recognition is if it doesn't pass, the district would be short $1.3 million, right? There's a lot of revenue there that schools could use and need. You know, obviously, we all hope that it does pass, and Albany has passed in the past when it's been up for renewal multiple times over the course of the past two decades. So I hope it does pass. If it doesn't, then, you know, we lose $1.3 million. And obviously, then that means the school board has to go through the tough prioritization decisions about where are we going to make up that loss.
Ross?
Yeah, having been at the session, I think two sessions back, if it does pass, we'll be short a million plus. If it doesn't pass, I think it's something in the order of about two and a half million per year, which means in very few years, we exhausted reserve. We're in a lot of hurt. So we have some wiggle room because of having a reserve, but even if it passes, we will be shrinking that and having to think about what we're doing in the longer term. So, you know, I would say, you know, if you like me, vote for me. If you don't like me, vote for me, and don't vote for LL, because the board will be wrestling with a gargantuan issue. I mean, to recognize, if it passes, we will be shrinking our reserve. If it doesn't pass, we will be making desperate moves to, resume, explain why it's a dire threat, get it on another future, year off, election cycle, and start making cuts.
Thank you. Paul?
Yeah, Ross is essentially correct about all of that. There's about $2.3 million structural deficit if it fails, but over a million dollars structural deficit even if it passes. So the board is going to have to be prioritizing cuts in the budget, which is not a fun thing to do. Everyone thinks that since the state is doing better, we should have more money, not less. But I don't have time in, you know, a scant minute to explain all the reasons for that. So yes, if LL passes, we'll have a few years to figure out what cuts to make or to find other sources of income. If it fails, we need to start making cuts immediately.
Thank you. Charlie?
So if LL fails, it will be really ugly. But we should ask why? And part of the reason is the state has a new funding formula. Five years ago, when we passed Measure I, we thought five years would get us through the worst of the state funding crisis, and we wouldn't necessarily need a renewal. That's different because the state has a new funding formula. Those of you who have looked at it know that it goes by LCFF, which the state says stands for Local Control Funding Formula. In our case, it actually stands for Less Cash Funding Formula. So it provides more revenue than the year before, but it's less revenue for Albany than it would have been under the old funding formula.
So you actually introduced, I think, I think everybody's answered this question. Am I correct? So you actually introduced the next question, which is, of course, locally controlled funding. And I'm just, although I imagine we have a pretty knowledgeable audience in the room, possibly some people who watch on television aren't familiar with it. So let's just explain that under this new funding, more authority to spend money has been transferred from the state to the local districts. But with parents should, must be consulted about how much, how the money should be spent in each school, and that children with special needs, English language learners, children from low-income homes, children who need special assistance, foster children, children from low-income families, all are supposed to get special attention and additional funding in the distribution, but at the discretion of the school board as advised by the parents. So how is this gone this year, applying this new approach and dealing with this measure? I think it's Elliot? Oh, so it's Ross. Sorry.
Well, not currently serving on the board, I only know as much as a reasonably well-informed parent. I think I have every confidence in the district administration on this, but what Charlie says is exactly true. The formula said, well, we'll give you more control of less dollars. And so net-net, it's being spread thinner. But I think the district administration is doing a very good job in laying out what it is we should be spending this money on. A money issue, first and foremost. I don't fault the execution at all, but there's less government of the state, and we're going to have to.
So Paul?
So you were referring in your question to the accountability piece of the Local Control Funding Formula, which goes by the acronym LCAP, Local Control Accountability Plan. And in Albany, we've had a strategic plan for the district for years. Every school site has to come up with what is called the Single Plan for Student Achievement. There's thousands of those things. And the LCAP is another layer of administration. It doesn't change very much what we've been doing in Albany. It doesn't change very much how we spend the money, but it does change how we have to go about accounting for how we spend the money. So the, you know, the main answer is it's, we've been doing it all along, now we're going to have to spend more time documenting it.
Thank you. Charlie?
So your question really has to do with input and accountability. And in both cases, I think the district, as Paul said, has been doing that all along. Going back to the strategic plan, the district started doing that in 2009, and that was a long process that involved input from staff and community. In addition, the district has relied on what's called the District English Learners Committee. And there were additional committees that were constituted to comply with the Local Control Accountability Plan. So it has actually done a very good job of soliciting input and using that input as part of the budget development process.
Thank you. Elliot?
How much to add, except, you know, I know the district has done a pretty good job in the past of having that dialogue with the community, and it's just, you know, mandates it. And like Paul says, just means we have to document it and actually make it much more formal.
I believe everybody's done this one. So an audience member says that the district is going to get a reimbursement of $3 million for Measure E pool construction. How should this $3 million be spent? Is this correct? And if so, how should it be spent?
It's not actually a reimbursement. There were matching funds that came along with the bond money, and the, those funds have less restrictions on them than the bond money does. So the bond money can, by the bond language, can only be spent on classrooms or the pool on the high school campus. The $3 million can be spent on any educational-related facilities in the district. And Charlie mentioned earlier the amphitheater on the high school campus that could be flattened and used for portables. The $3 million could be used there. That's something that we could probably handle pretty much right away with the funds we have. It could go towards designing new schools at Marin and Ocean View. The designing new schools at Ocean View is important because there might be state funds if we have the design available.
Thank you. Charlie?
So this is an interesting example. This $3 million has been received by the district. It's the state's contribution to the pool and classroom project, which came in well after all that work was completed. So the bond itself, Measure E, still has about $300,000 left in it. That could be used on classrooms at that location, at the location of the high school. The $3 million is an additional portion. The district does have an interesting legal opinion, which is not a ruling, but my understanding is it doesn't necessarily constrain the district to be using that money for classrooms at the high school site. Gives it a little bit more flexibility. My preference would be to see monies used for classrooms now, but this is a conversation we would have to have.
Elliot?
Yeah, definitely with Charlie, there were, you know, the board probably would have to meet and figure out what, you know, obviously, there are a lot of priorities, and many parties could probably use $3 million, whether that's to continue with what's going on San Gabriel, or maybe actually do something in Ocean View, or have the funds set aside so that Marin can actually continue and actually do its renovation. And not being privy to what those prioritizations are yet at the school board, it's really hard for me to comment on where that money really should go, but it definitely would be a discussion at the school board about which priorities would deserve the, or need the $3 million the most.
Thank you. So from the audience, here's a...
Did Ross? Ross didn't answer.
I was left out, but I really would have to say. It's been sad.
Oh, no, my dear friend, please. Do forgive me.
My answers have come in before me, so I'll let it rest with that. Thanks.
Well, you'll get a chance to answer others. So I think that it's Charlie's turn to start. Am I correct? So this is a question about the performance gap. And the questioner says, Albany has many wonderful youth assigned to the academic achievement gap because of test scores. What will you do to address their needs for career training, future education, and contributions to their community?
This is my opportunity to say, first of all, the question, what will I do, is not necessarily the right question, because I will not have any specific responsibility for carrying out any particular policy. A board member works with the rest of the board to set policy, direction, and guidance for the district. So it's very much a collaborative process. It's not my vision. It's what the board decides in public session is the right way to proceed. And this is an area that's been a priority for the board, was established as a board priority a couple of years ago. I think rather than my saying some specific measure or measures is what I would like to see, I would like to see a conversation and a revisiting of that as a priority and a reaffirmation of that as a priority.
Thank you. Elliot?
Definitely agree there where it is a priority, and I think it's very important that whatever achievement gap there is between the students here in the school district is reduced as much as possible. And I would definitely make that a priority to discuss at the school board, which, as Charlie said, it would have to be a collaborative effort and a policy.
Ross?
Well, to tackle what Charlie said, in the briefing on this is the board, this is the responsibilities, et cetera, they make the point that the board has one employee, and that's the superintendent. And as a part of what we've done, there was an orientation session for all the candidates. We were brought in. Superintendent introduced all of her team. We heard from folks talking about addressing the achievement gaps, everything from there to addressing the facilities issues and the dire situation of funding. So there is a team for this. The superintendent seems to have, you know, a good one and is, has folks to do this. It's not the board doing it. It's the board ensuring that it gets done, or is a priority for this district. Everything I've seen has been good thus far, you know, and look forward to seeing more.
Paul?
Thanks. That was well said, Ross. I think the achievement gap is a national problem, and there's been a lot of research on it, and nobody has quite solved it yet. But we are dedicated to working on it and doing what we can to correct it. And as Ross said, we have a superintendent who has this as one of her top goals, and she has a good team. And I think we're moving forward with strategies, the district is moving forward with strategies led by the superintendent, that we hope will close the achievement gap. And the main thing the board can do is just to keep an eye on it, look at assessments of the students, and make sure that we are making progress. And if we're not, then the board can ask for a change in strategy to try something else.
So Charlie, I'm going to start with you on, it's Elliot.
You can jump where you want.
Elliot, I am so sorry.
You can keep us on our toes that way.
Yeah, well, you're keeping me on my toes. I, so thank you very much. Elliot? This is a question near and dear to the league's heart, civics education. As it is now, the state requirement for teaching civics education is only one, it's only a one-term elective in the 12th grade. Is and should the district do more than that? And how and when do you think civic education and involvement should be taught? And since we now have Common Core, this is, makes it a big question, but you could touch on whichever parts of this you wish, how can it be worked into the Common Core curriculum?
Yeah, that is a big question. Let me just say that I definitely think it, on the face of it, definitely sounds like one semester in 12th grade, right when you're just about to get out of school, is probably the worst place to put it. It would be great if civics education should be moved down and really taught when our students can be more engaged and have more opportunity to continue that education, rather than having it be, you know, you're graduating, see you later, oh, and by the way, here's, here's a semester to, you know, mess around with, right? So I would say you could probably go, I'm trying to, maybe middle school, and as far as, you know, whether it should be in Common Core, I think the reality is it probably will take a little bit of time, as we haven't even figured out Common Core precisely on math and reading yet.
Thank you. So it's now Ross, I believe. I'm not on the ball. I forgive, do forgive me.
Well, I would say, in my experience, when I got out of school, what I hope my daughters are getting out of school is much more, a larger sort of whole thing. And whether or not there is bounded in a single classroom by name civics education, each of my kids is run for student office. Every one of my schools has a student government. Every one of the history classes I've heard that they've been taking have had discussions of civics issues. My younger daughter has just finished most of her volunteer obligations that they're doing at the eighth grade level, and a part of that used to be her history... doing at the eighth grade level, and a part of that used to be, her history teacher would work with a group that went down to visit juvenile courts and sit in on the process of an element of civic life. So I don't see this as, oh, there's this box over here in 12th grade, we got to fill it with civics now. I, you know, everywhere from Marin to the middle school, you know, I've seen firsthand voting, speaking, involvement, decision-making, as would be applied to citizenship.
Thank you. Paul?
Yeah, I'd agree with that completely. I just add that if we talk about Common Core, the main thrust of Common Core is to improve students' critical thinking. And critical thinking is the one, to me, it's the one most important factor in being a good citizen. If you can go to the polls and form your own opinion about the propositions and the candidates because you've been taught how to think, then you've had a civics education. And I think that's what we're trying to achieve in Albany.
Thank you. Charlie?
Well, just to be comprehensive, I would say we should recognize that we have more than a one semester government class in the high school. We have a one semester economics class. You can't really understand government without understanding economy. We also have one-year classes, required classes in U.S. history and world history. So the only year at which we don't have a required social science class is ninth grade. So there is, there is an opportunity there. There are additional opportunities in that there's a couple of dynamite classes, World Problems and Comparative Government, which are very good classes. And, you know, I think maybe this is a good time just to observe that when my daughter took U.S. history, she said, this is the best history class I've had because we don't just learn what happened, we learn why it happened. So that's really what we're looking for.
Thank you. On a totally different topic, and Ross, I think this is you, am I right? Emergency preparedness. So just to the north, we had a pretty big earthquake recently, and this could happen at any time here. Do you think the district is, and its teachers, its children, its staff are well-prepared to deal with emergencies like that earthquake? And what more do you think should be done in this area?
Well, I know, I know some of the, or most of the decision on Marin and Ocean View were really specifically earthquakes and whether or not we'll have school properties left to populate after an earthquake. I think we necessarily got some of that out of the whole 9/11 thing, greater attention to things, fences went up that weren't there before. None of this makes me happy. You know, I was in a national security career before I moved out to Albany. And I wish that didn't have to happen, and I think it's often security theater that it happens. Now that said, I think the schools have done a pretty good job of being organized as far as I've seen it. We had that lockdown a couple of years past and the rumor that there was someone with a gun. The communication went out. Was it as good as it needed to be? Probably not, but the, you know, there are systems in place. There's the robo-calling that gets to all of us. I think as a parent, I would say there's room to improve, but I know it's a priority. I know communication is for the superintendent.
Thank you. Paul?
Yes, communication is an issue for the superintendent. We have on loan for free from one of the law firms we work with, a emergency communications expert who's helping us create a communications, emergency communications plan. The board has the responsibility of reviewing each school's emergency preparedness plan every year. And the board has not done as much as it could to review those plans, but I think going forward, we're going to be looking at them more carefully. And the superintendent has established good relations with the fire and police departments in town. So I think it's, we're looking at it, we're working on it, we're trying to improve it. It's underway.
Thank you. Charlie?
So even before curriculum, the number one responsibility of the district is student safety. And I think staff understand that and are serious about that. In general, I think we have good site plans for emergency procedures. Where we really need to work is on the seismic retrofits for Ocean View School and whatever we're going to do about Marin School, whether it's retrofit or more likely replacement. So those are really the big pieces that remain to be addressed.
Thank you. Elliot?
Not much to add to what people said. I don't yet have a child in the school district, so I don't, I can't speak to the communication during emergencies, but I do hope that the district is able to leverage just the latest technologies, whether it's using social media, more, you know, push technologies to get information out there through various mediums, whether it's online, using mesh networks, maybe if cell towers are down in a really bad disaster. So I hope, you know, as a member of the school board, I would try to enter that into the conversation, how to leverage, you know, new technologies of communication. And then, of course, you know, Charlie gets at the really heart, which is shoring up the infrastructure to make sure that the schools are as safe as possible for, you know, disaster, or situations that could happen in the future.
I'm thinking it's Paul?
Yes.
Why not?
I've lost confidence in my system here. This is from the audience. An underserved population in Albany is gifted students. Do you think the district has an obligation to address their needs? Or more broadly, what as, you know, what do you see the district as doing for gifted students and students that can use more demanding classes? And what more needs to be done or could be done?
Well, I would disagree with that characterization that it's an underserved community. We do have, of course, gifted students. In fact, all of our students are above average. But we have a lot of advanced placement and honors classes at the high school. We have accelerated math for lower, in the lower grades. We have a lot of things for gifted students. There are always a few students who are so gifted that they really don't belong in a public school setting. And it's not a big enough district to have a special gifted student program and separate those kids. So we just try to provide options for every capability of student.
Thank you. Charlie?
So while it's true that we don't have a specific gifted and talented educational program, in my experience, at the elementary schools, teachers have always been good at differentiated instruction. They've been good at encouraging their students who are ahead of the class to take on additional work, to do a little something extra. By the time we get to the high school, as Paul has mentioned, we have a wide assortment of advanced placement classes, which allow for a more challenging curriculum. And we are not trying to restrict who enters those classes, that those students who are qualified can do the work and want to take on the challenge, could and should have the opportunity to take those classes.
Thank you. Elliot?
Yeah, the limited firsthand knowledge I have from talking to teachers that are touring, like Marin and elementary schools here is that the teachers do present that they have like a step-up curriculum for gifted students, so there is something there. But since I can't know for certain that the underlying assumption of the question, which is that gifted students are disadvantaged here, because I, because I don't know whether that is true or not, I can't really answer more than just that.
Ross?
I'm sure. I think this is a question very near and dear to me. What I would really love to be able to do on the board is keep an eye out for what it is that we can do so that, something that Paul said, you know, that, well, some kids don't belong, maybe it's Charlie, don't belong in a public school system. I'd like to make that not true. You know, the brightest kid could find enough here to keep them here. And, you know, and by asking the question, we ask questions like on, say, how much education is being afforded for remedial? We don't ask the question of who in our community, who in our schools, who in the classrooms, but also who among the parents are taking online courses? You can get a kid in a college-level math course, you may not be able to get a waiver of some other thing that they have to do. It'd be nice, maybe, if you could. But I'd really love to know where is our leading edge, be it the students, their parents, the teachers? A lot of that is this sort of unmeasurable thing right now, and it's coming faster and richer every day. Amazing, I mean, I've taken online courses, everyone in my family's taken an online course in some form. I don't think we measure that well.
Thank you. So here's a question to send terror into the hearts of kids. Year-round learning. Educational research says students learn more without an almost three-month vacation each year from school. How do you feel about Albany School District revising its calendar for better learning? And, I mean, what approach would you take if so? I think it's you, Charlie.
Well, that's a long question. I think we could and should explore different calendar options. We tried to do that a few years ago. We did do that. We do seem to keep coming back to more or less the calendar that we currently have. One of the specific things that I've always been concerned about in our calendar is the position of winter break. It does not come between first and second semester. And so for high school students, winter break is not a break. It happens and you come back and two or three weeks later, you take final exams. So I think there are definitely things we can do that would be better in terms of the calendar. Going to year-round instruction, that would take a while.
Elliot?
Yeah, just philosophically, I think, you know, my approach to things is, I think everything should be on the table. I would definitely agree that it bears looking at. Like the traditionalist in me probably says, oh, my God, I only know the way it's been done. Maybe we should just keep it that way. But that's, you know, not the innovative thinking I do at work, and so I would definitely be open to looking at it, although I don't have a position currently on whether it should stay or change. But, you know, just keeping in mind that what's in the best interest of the students, what facilitates the best learning, and also what fits best with the schedules of the parents who have to figure out, you know, when and where to pick up their kids and how to juggle their vacation time and the other time they have during the day and the rest of the year.
Ross?
Would be very much of interest to me. My kids, a lot of other kids I know have been in programs like ATDP, which Berkeley runs out at a campus in Point Richmond. There is a school building, it's used year-round because it's used for summer courses. I don't know right now what capacity we have to use the facilities we have, but, you know, they're there, whether or not there's budget, whether or not it's done, however it's done. You know, things like ATDP are fee-based, basically summer school, private summer school essentially.
Can you, do you know what ATDP?
ATDP is the Academic Talent Development Program. Basically, the school of education at Berkeley runs programs, an elementary division and an upper division, for students, I think roughly K-12-ish across the two divisions, and run as something that is like summer camp. You're paying for it, but it's school. And I've seen a lot of kids who've loved it.
Thank you. Have we all had a chance? No. Paul?
You know, from a philosophical point of view, I think the idea that students being out of school for three months and forgetting a lot of what they learned, certainly there's research to support that. It would be impossible for a single school district to make any headway on that. For one thing, it would be negotiable with the unions. For another, it would cost a lot of money because teachers would be teaching more hours and most of our budget goes to personnel. So we'd really need a statewide or national initiative in order to get any progress on that. So it's not something that I think the board can afford to spend time on because we have too many other things to do and we're just not going to be able to make that happen.
Elliot, I believe you start?
If you say so.
Okay. How kind of you. So this is a question a little bit different. It was touched on a bit in the question about, like, this is about life skills. How well do you think the young people in the Albany schools are prepared for life in society? And this could cover many different things, among them managing personal finances, work skills, and other things that have been mentioned earlier. So life skills, do you think that students come out of the district well-prepared?
I can't fall back on statistics or data that tells me whether they are or not. What I can say is I think life skills are probably underrepresented in the curriculum in all school districts. And I would, I definitely think it's something that should be pulled up a little bit more. There's so many kids that just get through school and then they figure out they, and they think they should go to college and go to college, and they come out of college and they don't know how to balance their checkbook and they don't know how to, do their own laundry or whatever, whatever it is. And it's just something that I think should be emphasized more than it probably is.
Thank you. Ross?
In my experience, I've seen some really good things. I mean, at the elementary school, the degree to which it's not just in the classroom teaching, but it's the gardening. The gardening in Marin was, if nothing else, giving them an appreciation of where their food was coming from and what you do when you have it. You know, I've heard horror stories of kids in schools where it isn't, where they can't name three vegetables. I think the kids at Marin can't. All the way up to, say, in the high school, where Theater Ensemble has been a club for a couple of years or is a kid-built thing, putting on some really good productions and, you know, getting, rolling up the sleeves, getting their hands dirty, doing some things. Entrepreneurialism at the high school, to bounce back to the civics issue, there's going to be another forum. We're all going to be there. It's going to be run by the high school students. So later this month at Albany High, I think with the 20th, there's going to be another forum. A lot of things that don't happen within the boxes of a class, or there's no class on life skills, there's an awful lot of life skill learning, I think.
Thank you. Charlie? No. No idea where I am. Paul, thank you.
Yeah, I'd agree with that. I think starting in preschool, kids are learning how to get along with other kids, how to work collaboratively, how to deal with authority, how to be authorities. We have programs where we pair up older kids in the middle school with younger kids in the middle school to be their mentors and help them out. Those are all life skills sorts of things. I don't know if it really fits the bill, but we're working on adding more career technical education to the, in the high schools, which teaches, you know, work skills, which is one form of life skills. So, but we don't have, we do have one specific class in that, in the ninth grade, but other than that, we don't have any room in the curriculum for specific classes in life skills.
Thank you. Charlie?
So I will just add to that, that about seven or eight years ago, the board became alarmed, actually, about behavior among high school students, threatening, life-threatening behavior. And it led to a class called Identity, Health, and Society, which was the ninth-grade class. And this does, this does address exactly these kinds of concerns that you raise. We can certainly revisit that curriculum and consider how well we are actually addressing those concerns.
So this question from the audience is related to something that I think Paul just mentioned. It asks whether the district should emphasize community colleges as a goal for students and also asks how the district regards trades, training in the trades. So these are basically how wide is the range of after-high-school activities or goals that the district is trying to make available to its students? And how wide should that be? How four-year colleges, two-year colleges, trade school, other possibilities? And I think it's Ross.
I don't know a lot about where we stand right now, and absolutely, we're seeing refocus on manufacturing, refocus on trade skills. I'm skeptical on its future, but 3D printing, for example, in the schools that are getting things that are replacing shop with an information age equivalent. All I would say is that what I'd like to see is as much flexibility as possible to go back to the online courses. You know, it's great if you could take an online course in any of these areas. It's a problem if you can't do it because you've got all your other coursework to get done, including things you ought to maybe have waived. done, including things you ought to maybe have waived to give you the latitude to do that. So I would love to see us be as flexible as possible to let that seep in from wherever it's going to come, be that community colleges, classes from MIT online, or creation, money willing, something like fab lab at the high school, because you're no longer repairing carburetors, you're building 3D models and printers.
Thank you. Paul?
So we do have a lot of students who graduate from high school and go to community college. We have not tracked them as well as we should, and we're working on tracking them better to find out how many of them go on and get a four-year degree. But that is certainly a great pathway for a lot of students. We also encourage, and are, you know, increasing our encouragement of students who are able to do it, to take community college classes before they graduate from high school. We do have career technical education classes, as I mentioned, several new plans for several new pathways to be generated in the schools, a health pathway, a build leads pathway. And, Alan, what's the third one? That's right. Right, IT, IT pathway. Time is up. Alan Maris here is our greatest advocate of career technical education, and we're sorry, we're going to be sorry to see him leave the board.
Okay, Charlie?
Okay. Well, high school is a launching pad into whatever comes next. And high schools should be able to send kids out onto whatever pathways they are going to follow after that. One size does not fit all, and we definitely don't want this to be a pathway only into a four-year academic university. Community college can be a great option for students. It provides a very affordable first two years of college and a pathway into the UC system. Career technical education is something that the board has really been working on to support, and it is another pathway. So I guess the answer, if I understand the question, is all of the above.
Okay. So it's now time? The time has flown? Oh, I left off somebody? Elliot, forgive me.
Only if you need me to. I would just say, you know, even though I'm a product of the whole four-year university track, I definitely agree it's not for everybody. And I would love to see just more, you know, if a kid, if a senior in high school knows he wants to be a programmer, you know, just take some programming classes, go to, you know, a school just for programming. So I would love to see more facilitation of students being able to explore a community college, four-year college, trade schools. You know, just, the less they feel that they have to go on this track, the better, and schools need to facilitate that, you know. We definitely want to help bring that about.
Thank you very much. So now, we're going to start with our closing statements. And I think we start again with you, Paul. And I would suggest, look to the audience, because there are two cameras there, and that means you'll be looking to the viewers, many, many viewers who are going to replay this in future.
Oh, I'm sure. Well, I've been on the school board since 2009. I think I've worked well collaboratively with other school board members. We've kept the schools solvent through the greatest recession California's had in recent memory. And we just went through the process of hiring a new superintendent, who I think is going to continue to lead the school district forward, continuing to improve, close the achievement gap, find money to build the facilities we need. I think we've been on a good track, and I feel very good about it. I feel that of all the things that I've done in my life, being on the school board is the one that I never have to question whether it's of value to society. And it makes me feel good about the time and effort that I put into it. So I'd just like to continue the work that I've been doing, and appreciate your vote.
Thank you. Charlie?
So I would like to begin by thanking the League of Women Voters for the forum tonight, and for also providing smartvoter.org, where we can put information about ourselves and our interests. I think it's a valuable service you provide, and thank you very much. I also wanted to take a moment and say that what I'm doing is running for a seat on the Board of Education. I am not running against anyone or anything. I'm simply running for a seat. And that's, that's the perspective I'd like to bring. And I'm running because I care about public education. I care about public schools in general, and I care about Albany's public schools. And I've been involved in them for a long time. I very much was honored to be on the board previously. I found it interesting and challenging to represent the community, to work with staff, to be that liaison between community and staff. It's a, it's a very interesting position and opportunity that not everyone gets to have. And I would very much enjoy doing that again. It would be a very, it would be a privilege for me to have another chance to do that.
Thank you. Elliot?
Hi, yes. Thanks for creating this forum for us to introduce ourselves to all of you. You know, there are three seats, and there are four of us. I think any one of us, or all of us, would do well in the job. So at the end of the day, it's really about who resonates with you and who you think can work together well. And knowing these four, three guys, I think we all would be able to do that. You know, I can just say, from my personal background, I enjoy working collaboratively, trying to find solutions to really hard problems. I work in industries where we never have enough money to do everything we want to do, and we want to do way more than we can actually spend time and money on. And so it seems very much similar to the challenges facing the Albany School District. You know, I have two kids that will be going to school in Albany, I hope, soon. I moved here 12 years ago, before I was even thinking about schools, so I had no clue that Albany schools were great when I moved here. But now I do know, because I have two, two young children, and I would love to see these schools continue to be great, even despite the fiscal challenges. And I know we can get there. And, you know, I definitely would enjoy working with the other members of the board to ensure that legacy continues. The one, last thing I would say is that, as you might notice, I'm not white, but my, the other candidates are. And I mention that because, you know, we do have a diverse student body, and I think it's important to have a perspective from a person of color on the school board. And it's something that I would definitely bring, not just speaking as an Asian-American, but, you know, a minority, and trying to look at things from the perspective of others who aren't advantaged and aren't privileged, whether that's economically disadvantaged, disadvantaged because of, you know, race, color. Those, those perspectives are important and have to be brought into the discussion. So I appreciate, you know, your consideration, and hope you vote for me.
Thank you. Ross?
Well, to some echo Paul, I don't think of myself as running against anybody. I think of, I would very much like to join a, an already well-functioning team. I was not responsible for selecting the new superintendent. The new superintendent strikes me as very qualified and has a good team, and I'm looking forward to that. And I was not involved in the, the work to get LL on the ballot, but I very much appreciate his there. If you do nothing else, vote for LL, because otherwise, we're going to be in a world of hurt. Now, I, you know, this is a very short forum, there's very little we can cover, et cetera, et cetera. I have a website, so rossfornumberforschools.org. I will take your questions. I will answer your questions. I welcome questions. Be happy to continue this dialogue there. Just to tick off the three big issues on the voter site, and again, thank you for creating a voter site. First and foremost, advocate for school funding, both what we're doing with LL, but the fact that there's an enormous amount of contribution coming to the schools. I was on the school care board for a while. If you've given to the Albany Education Fund, Albany Music Fund, you know, thank you to you. If you're paying to have your kid play in sports. I don't like that there's pay-to-play, but we give scholarships to anyone who needs it. I really like that we are pushing into the schools as much as we are. I wish the state were giving us some. Secondly, anticipate, take advantage of change. You know, you can take an online course from MIT, and the universities are spewing out more information than we've ever had in the history of the world as free, free courseware. You know, we're not going to dump schools in favor of online courses, but let's gobble up what we can of all of that. And then, help maintain the community spirit. I already talked about it in terms of what people give in. When we were commuting kids to games, carpooling, you know, what we still do, an awful lot of that. So much is coming from the community. I would really like not to mess that up. So we're cherishing the families, not just the kids, doing this as a community.
Thank you very much. So we've come to the end of our, as Ross said, short forum, but we covered a lot of ground, however superficially. The candidates helped me keep, keep on track. Thank you. And a lot of thoughtful answers and food for thought. I want to thank the audience for your thoughtful and informed questions. And let's thank the city of Albany, who made available this space, and also the, the video recording of it, so it'll be able to be replayed, both on the YouTube channel of City, and also on the League YouTube channel, so people can watch this at any hour of the day or night and find out a little more about these four candidates. For more information on candidates and ballot measures, I hope you will visit smartvoter.org, and perhaps votersedge.org, which combines some of the information from Smart Voter with information about who is supporting candidates and who is funding candidates. Not so relevant in a race like this, but on the bigger races, probably very interesting. Please visit our league's website. It's our initials, L W V B A E dot org, to learn about all the state and local ballot measures and more. So thank you for coming. Thank you for watching. Your vote does make a difference, so please register before the last day, October 20th, and vote on November 4th. Thank you very much. Good night.